If you have any questions, parent, alright, you can check in the Q and A box. Alright, we will not be using the chat function, we are using the Q and A function. Right before I hand over the time to Mister David Tan, okay, the person who is going to bring us through today's session. I would like to introduce our members here, we have Madam Christie Chan and also Madam Masni. Alright, yeah, Madam Christie Chan is our H O D I C T and Madam Masni is the program I see. So if you have any problem after today's sessions, parents do not worry, do contact us, okay? We are always available to help you through, alright? So for today's session, we have Mister David Tan, the director of Singapore M D M Private Limited. Then he will be sharing with us some tips and also what M D M is about and how you can manage and control your child's device, yeah?
Thank you, Madam Faiza.
Yes, yeah, hi David, yeah, I shall hand over the time to you, David.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I get a screen, please?
Yeah, can I share?
Okay. Not be able to share the full screen. I'm sorry, Madam Faiza, I'm not able to share the full screen, um, can you?
Okay.
Allow me to.
You want me to share screen for you, Mister David Tan?
Uh, I need to share my full screen, not just a window. Um, I'm not able to do that.
Okay, this cannot hear, okay, parents. Okay, Mister David, you may want to share by window?
Yeah, I need to share the full screen or sharing more than one window.
Yeah, okay, try. Well, waiting for Mister David Tan to share screen, Madam Christie Chan would like to address some concerns and questions that your parents have posted. Okay, to P G, yeah, yeah.
Alright, test, I hope you can hear me clearly. Um, yeah, some parents actually put in some questions, uh, so that while waiting for Mister David, uh, I can actually respond to some of your concern. So, uh, there's one regarding the delayed delivery of iPad. Yeah, we understand that, uh, some of you have not received your iPad, so not to worry. So, once you receive your iPad, right, then just ask your child to bring it to school and we will get the I C T manager to set up for you. So, we are aware of Vendo not able to deliver it yet, so not to worry about that. However, if you have, let's say, an existing iPad at home and you don't mind your child using it first. Uh, you can also bring that iPad that you already have at home, yeah, so that's one thing. Then the other one is that, um, right, a parent mentioned about using iPad to assess Google Classroom. But not able to lock in using iPad at home. Uh, yes, we understand that some children experience difficulty logging into their Google Classroom. So just alert the form teacher, we will actually troubleshoot it for your child. Um, and we will escalate it to help that if the school is not able to resolve it. So don't have to worry, level one will be in school, we will look into it, you can actually alert the form teacher first. The form teacher will alert myself or the I C T manager, then, uh, we can actually unlock account and reset password for you. However, after our attempt to reset and unlock account, you are still not able to assess, right? We will escalate it to, uh, help that which is level two, which is at a back end, um, that's handled by, uh, staff that outside school. Ten, so just let us know and we will attend to you A S A P. Then, uh, okay, another concern is regarding the safekeeping of iPad. Um, we will not be taking, we will not keep any of your child's iPad in the school. Yeah, so your child will bring iPad to school every day and at the end of the day, of course, your child will bring home. But what we have put in place is that, uh, on Monday itself, right, before your child leave the classroom for the C C A. And if they do not need to use the iPad for the C C A, we actually have a, a special cabinet. Uh, placed in the, in the class, so the children will place the iPad in this cabinet. The form teacher will lock the cabinet before all of us leave the physical classroom, yeah. However, if the C C A that your child is in requires the use of iPad, your child will be taking the iPad along with him or her. Okay, so we do not keep any iPad in the school. Uh, however, let's say sometimes our I C T manager has collected the iPad and trying to do the setup for you. And if the setup is halfway through, not done, then, uh, we do not want to disrupt the setting up. We may then keep it, this is really unforeseen, and if we do keep your iPad in school, we will give you a call personally. But under normal circumstances, we do not keep any iPad in school, right, thank you. Then, yes, about, uh, bringing iPad to school every day, uh, yes, if your child have opted into the program, please do bring the iPad. Every day, yeah, we are not using it like, um, from seven. I'm sorry, we are not using it, sorry, uh, we are not using it, uh, from seven forty all the way to two ten itself. So, uh, we will just use it as and when we need to and as and when, you know, sometimes when you deliver the lesson halfway through and then you. You just need to use a device, I will just ask the children to take it out, however, because we do plan our lesson. Uh, if we do know that for that particular lesson, there is a particular app or there's a particular thing that we want to do with technology. We will then specifically instruct your child, hey, please remember to bring your iPad tomorrow and we are going to use this, this, yeah, for this purpose. Can so, but your child is strongly encouraged to bring the iPad every day, yeah. Then, uh, okay, regarding today's workshop, right, some parents was asking whether there's any passcode given, yes, there is, there is a passcode given. Will be given to you so that you can actually, um, go into the app in order to set up your, uh, device. Yeah, so the passcode will be given to you later, uh, in fact, if you want to know, the passcode is actually three nine seven. B for Bangkok, uh, B seven, yeah, we are typing in the chat for you, yeah, thank you. Okay, so, uh, Mister David, ready to take over?
I'm still having some technical difficulties, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me see, maybe while waiting, we can address some of the issue, is there a schedule as in which day my child needs to bring iPad to class? Okay, I've addressed it now, bring it daily, because, uh, we may use it anytime, yeah, depending on the, uh, how, how the, the lesson progressed, okay? Then, let me see, if you want to send them to iPad education classes outside school. Okay, uh, for this M D M, right, it is actually, uh, co-own of the device. So what we actually do for school is that for the applications that we are using in school. We actually get our I C T manager to push out the app to all your devices, yeah, so that we can use it in, um, in school. And we actually, uh, so called it over the controller, for example, your child will not be able to use YouTube, uh, not be able to watch YouTube video. From seven A M to four P M, unless the teacher requires the use of YouTube in the classroom for teaching and learning. Then we will release the right for the child, otherwise it will be blocked, so your child cannot watch YouTube video. From seven A M to four P M on weekday, yeah, but, uh, weekends, right, then the school do not control the iPad at all. So what happened is that after four P M, when your child reach home, right, then you will have full control over that own, over the device. Yeah, that's why we have this workshop for you to know exactly what you can do to control your child's device. So if you are attending any workshop that is outside school and you require certain app to be installed on your device, right? Then, uh, you have the rights to install it on your own after four P M. Uh, I do have requests from parents saying that, uh, can you release, I want my child to use it twenty-four seven anytime you want. Uh, let us know specifically who, uh, you are, your, your child, the, the name of the child, the class or child is in. Then we will get the I C T manager to release all rights to you, that means the school have no right over your device. As in, we don't control the device, the usage of the device, but in terms of installing the app, right, pushing out the application, right? We will still do it because, um, it will be very much easier for the teacher, T and L in class, yeah. So, uh, so if anything that the school is not using, uh, you have the rights to install it yourself, right? Okay, is there anything, so, uh, okay? Okay, I think some of the questions, right, uh, my, my colleague is actually helping to reply you, right, via the chat as well. Is, uh, are we able to go ahead with it already, Mister David?
Uh, well, well, I'll, I'll share one, one screen at a time, unfortunately.
Okay.
Uh, not able to share the entire desktop. Sure, parents, thanks for your patience, uh, I do apologize. Uh, what I was trying to share is to share both the iPad as well as the iPhone, so that we can see what is happening, um, side by side. When a parent is trying to manage, um, the student device, unfortunately, I can only share one particular window and not both at the same time. Um, so, so we will, we will try to make do, alright, so thank you for your time this afternoon. Um, we will go through what Screen Guide does and how as a parent you can use Screen Guide to manage, uh, the child's iPad. Um, so first and foremost, um, you will need to have the Screen Guide, um, app. So if you are an iPhone, uh, parent, the user, you can get a Screen Guide, this is the Screen Guide, uh, icon from the App Store. It's, uh, can grow, the baby can grow in a pouch, uh, very, uh, easily identified. Uh, if you are using Android, you can also get it from the, uh, uh, Google Play Store, both are free apps which you can download. So these are the two methods that you can get to Screen Guide. Uh, if you do not, uh, have a, or if you prefer to use a browser, you can similarly also just use a browser. By going to this, um, link, uh, screenguide dot mozzol, uh, dot com, uh, then you will be able to, uh. Uh, use Screen Guide as well, uh, all three interfaces are very similar, one is just through a browser. The other two is through a, a native app that is on your phone, right? So prior to, um, us starting this, uh, so while you can download that and try to follow along. Uh, there are some prerequisites that needs to happen, uh, before, uh, we can do this. So I'm going to share, okay, the iPad, right, so this is the iPad, um, the, your child's iPad, so here I have an iPad with me. Uh, first, before you can do the linking, you have to make sure that the iPad is already managed by the M D M. So one quick way, uh, to check whether it is managed is to go into settings. Uh, towards the top here, you should see that this iPad is supervised and managed by, uh, the school, uh, in this case, this is under my company. Then, once it is managed, you should also have this app, this is the Mozzol Manager app, this is modern, you should have this app before you can proceed. Um, so if you search for it, it is called Manager, right, Manager App, launch it. Right, um, if you are prompted to allow for location services, allow Bluetooth, please go ahead and allow that, um. It should be assigned to your child, so on the top left corner down here, you can see the name Zachary, so that's my boy's name. It should be assigned to your child's name, if it's not assigned to a child's name, um, you will not be able to link, uh, to your, um, child, uh, for this exercise. So after you have verified the iPad is properly managed and assigned to the student, you may go ahead. And, um, start the linking, right, so if you are using, um, the app. Uh, please, uh, go ahead and create, so I'm going to use the browser here because I'm not able to share, um, the, the screen. Uh, at the same time, so I'm going to pop over back to the browser. And what you need is to enter an email, right, so any email, working email, Gmail, Hotmail, Outlook dot com, all will work. So simply, uh, go to the login page, um, and if you do not have a account, if this is the first time. Uh, click on Create Account, enter the, the, the password. So here for. Enter a password, uh, an email address, um, that I've created, can enter your name here. And I'll give you the password, right, I'm gonna. Put in a password, click Agree and Sign Up, right, so. Once you have done that, click on Sign Up. And, uh, that's it, right, so you have signed in and you should be on this page that says welcome. Either create a family or to join a family, right, so if it's the first time you've, you, you're using this, click on Create a Family. Right, you can give your family a name, I'm just going to leave it as David's family, uh, that one create again. And that's done, the family is, is created, but there are no members in this family, right? So next, what you need to do is to add the first child and click on Add Child, right? So you can enter, uh, the child's name, optionally, you can enter, um, the, the birthday, right? For your child, right, so let's say, you know, twenty thirteen January, this is optional. If you enter this, then some of the controls that you will be implementing, for example, if you set the restriction, you see block all apps. That is sixteen years and above, uh, then you will block it, uh, because you have indicated, uh, the birth year for your child. If you, uh, did not set, uh, this birthday here or birth year, then, uh, you may not accurately block those apps. Based on your child's age, right, so, but this is optional, so you can choose to put in or not. Um, so once you have entered that, at the bottom, uh, create child, we don't create child. And then, Zachary's account is, is, is created, is linked, but there's no device, so next, we'll go ahead. After creating, uh, adding, uh, Zachary as, as a member, go ahead and click on Device. To add the device, right, so it asks you, uh, what kind of device are you adding for your child, I'm going to add a school managed device. So at this stage, pause, you need to go back to the iPad, alright, so what it says is you have to go back to the iPad. And open Safari Browser and go to this link, right, screen dot guide forward slash connect. So coming back over to the iPad and change screen again, so coming back over to the iPad, what you need to do is going to launch. Um, the browser, go to screen dot guide, then slash. Connect, press go, so you go to website and then at this point, it will prompt you to open up the, uh, manager app. Right, tap on Open, and it will launch Screen Guide, uh, and it will here prompt you to enter the accounts. Your parent account, so the parent account that we have just created earlier, you have to put it in, so earlier I created E D P S dot. Parents, yeah. Okay, so this is the account that we have just created a few moments ago, um, so key that in, um, put in the password. My password is a super secure, one, one, two, two, three, four, four, right, obviously, you put a mustard password in this, right? Uh, tap on Login, you authenticate. And at this point, it will ask you to put in the passcode, so the school passcode, uh, just now, um. It was indicated, right, the school passcode that you should be entering should be three nine seven B seven, right? So on here, key in, three nine. Seven B seven, right, it is case sensitive, so please make sure that you key in, uh, in, 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 uh, uppercase. Uh, for my case here, because I am not part of the school, I'm not a student of the school, parent of the school, I'm going to use my own code. So don't, don't look, don't look at my code, don't, don't follow my code, uh, instead use what was, uh, what is the school's code, which is. Uh, which is, oh, man, three nine seven B seven, right, so that's a code that you should be using. Uh, instead of, uh, my code and then press on Send. And it should link, really, the association is complete and tap on Close. Get out and then go back to your phone or to the browser, right, go back to the phone or browser. So again, I'm going to do a switcheroo here, going back to this, so I'm sorry, this page, so if you're on the phone. Uh, tap on the right arrow that actually scrolls through the pages and then tap on Close, right? So once you're back here, you notice that after the association is done, the iPad that we have just linked is now visible here. And can tap on it. Okay, that time on it and the interface on the right side, uh, you may see a different thing, uh, but these are all the features that you have on the screen guide. To allow you to manage, um, the student device, okay? So the association is done, so we, next part, we're going to go into using these features to manage the student device. Okay, so just a quick orientation, so at the very top here, when it says time to manage this device. Um, this is to indicate to you whether you as a parent have the rights to manage a device at this particular point, right? The school hours that's designated is between seven A M to four P M, so during school hours. Um, the school will have central management and it will control what apps are allowed, which apps are not allowed. Uh, and filter out any, uh, inappropriate websites and so forth, right? After four P M, then as a parent, you will be able to manage, uh, the device. So if you attempt to try to use, uh, the app, uh, between the hours of seventy A M to four A, uh, four P M. You will see a message here to say that you are not allowed to manage the device, right? For this particular workshop, I've set this to be twenty-four hours, so I can manage it anytime, uh, the whole day until eleven fifty-nine to nine, right? So if you see that you can manage, that means you have control, if you see a message up here that says you cannot manage, that means it is still under the school control. Right, so the first part here, alerts impending, this is very important, um, the M D M is not a real-time system. In the sense that when you send a command, it doesn't immediately, right, right, that second, uh, activate, right? It may take some time for it to communicate to the cloud service and for the cloud, cloud service to send commands back to the iPad. Uh, wherever the iPad, uh, might, might be, yeah, be at home or in the school or Starbucks somewhere, right? So, under alerts impending, this is a good way for you as a parent to see whether the commands have, have gone out. Or it's still pending to go out, right, the first part here is alerts, we can skip that, so if you tap into pending, you will see whether there's any pending commands. If you see it's all looks perfect, that means all the commands have gone out and you can expect that the restrictions or the settings that you have pushed to, to the iPad. Uh, would be effective, be effect, right? So here, uh, this is, is where you should come in and you can always, uh, either swipe down from the middle of the, the, the screen. Uh, if it's on the phone, just swipe down with, using your finger, uh, uh, swipe, swipe downwards. On the browser, there's this button for me to click to refresh, so you can either swipe down or refresh it just to see, uh, the latest information, right? So going back, uh, a page, so the first feature we're going to look at is the ability to disable the device usage for some time. This is a timeout feature, so let's click into that and see how this works. So the idea that, uh, when you give technology, a, a device like an iPad to, to your child. Um, they may be using it, um, extensively and you may want to, uh, give them timeout. Or say, you know, for this certain period, you cannot use the device, uh, you can use this timeout function to say that I am going to disable this device. For a period of time, fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, a few hours, you know, six, up to six hours. Or until I unlock it again, right, so it's, it's unlimited up to from twenty-four hours until I unlock it again. So timeout will simply disable the iPad such that the child will not be able to use the device without your supervision or your specific explicit approval. Right, so you can just set this, set a time and click on Block. Uh, but before I do that, uh, you can see that there is also, uh, another button next to it called Schedule. So you can also set a recurring schedule to say that I will want to block this at a specific time, uh, every day, right? So for example, um, if I tap on Add New Schedule, I can see, alright, uh, you eat, need to eat dinner every day. Therefore, uh, during dinner time, um, every day between the hours of, um, six to seven. Uh, I will disable or disable. Uh, the iPad such that you will not be able to use it and you need to come for dinner, right? So you can set it recurring and you add additional schedule as well, uh, for example, uh, sleep time, right? Every day between the hours of, of, you know, nine P M, ten P M, until the following morning, you can also block it. Such that your child, you know, may, may, who will not be able to wake up in the middle of night and try to use the iPad, right? So you can, you can set certain, uh, uh, more than one, uh, schedule in here and optionally toggle it on and off. Simply just by tapping on this button down here, okay? Um, so, but, but before we do that, before we do that, uh, I'm going to just show you how this works. So let's come back to block now, we're just going to send an echo command, we say, I'm going to send this for fifteen minutes, uh, click the block, right? Click the block, so it's, it's, it's gone out and on this part. I can go and see whether it's pending or not, right, so, so while that's happening, I'm going to quickly switch over to the iPad, right? Because I want to show you what's happening, so on iPad side, so if you see the iPad site, so, um, it will do its own thing. And then the manager app will launch and it will lock itself, uh, into the, the, uh, this, this screen, right? For fifteen minutes, right, so you're not able to see what I'm doing, but if I try to press the Home button to try to get out from this screen. Uh, it, it's not possible, so effectively this iPad is disabled, uh, until you allow it again for fifteen minutes. After fifteen minutes, then, you know, it will, uh, release itself and iPad will go back to normal usage more, right? So, so that's how timeout works, it's, it's very good, uh, if you just want to block, uh, the device usage for a specific, uh, period of time. Um, then, then you can use this timeout to quickly block it. Uh, or to block it based on a schedule that you, you want, right? To unblock it, you can come back to timeout here, I'm going to click on Unblock. Click on, on Block, then I can go into Pending, just to make sure that it's gone out, right? And click on Refresh a couple of times, and if you're really impatient, you can press this big button to say push any pending commands. Just to make sure that everything has gone out, I'm going to click this a few times, going to click Refresh a couple of times, until you see it's all looks perfect, alright? That means the command has gone out, now I'm going to quickly switch over to the iPad again, right, I'm going to switch over to iPad again and now by pressing the Home button. Right, I'm able to get out from it, so once you have sent a command to unlock, then your child will be able to, to get out from this, this, this particular screen. And be able to use iPad as per normal, right, so that is the timeout, uh, feature, um, that is, uh, available. Uh, for Screen Guide, uh, it is a very easy to use feature that allows you to, you know, simply, uh, disable it. Uh, for small, uh, very quickly, alright, um, so, so let's go to the next one, uh, there's a schedule here, I'm just, see whether I can turn this off. Um, can delete it as well, so I'm going to delete this, make sure it doesn't affect us as we go along, right? So type out, so next one, uh, let's take a look at the next one, next one is Restrictions. So what does it, the, uh, what, what does it do, right, you can choose what can be done on this device from a list of options, so you clean through that. Right, you can see enable or disable restrictions and in this list, there's a number of things that you can do, right? For example, hide apps for older ages, hide non-active, uh, non-native apps, hide Safari, block FaceTime, block In-app purchases and so forth. Right, so this is a very simple thing where you can say, okay, I do not want you to use the camera, I can just toggle it here. Uh, I don't want you to use Safari, I can just toggle it here and allow it to do its thing, right? So let's say I've just, just toggle this too, um, given to the shoot, future rule, uh, it's been too late, it's been too late, right? So my camera, which was here and Safari was, which was down here, uh, uh, have both disappeared, right, they're gone, right? Now I'm going to turn it back on, so you can see, see what happens, uh, when I, uh, re-enable Safari and Camera, right? So once the command has gone through, uh, it should appear momentarily. Um, so Restrictions is a quick way for you to just, you know, for whatever reason, you, you don't want them to use Safari, because once you give us Safari, they can go anywhere. Um, so you can say, oh, just disable Safari, uh, when I'm not supervising you or, or I don't want you to use Safari, uh, for whatever particular reason, right? So I'll give you the wall, I'm going to go and push the command and refresh and make sure this, this gone out, right? So there we go, camera is back and Safari is also back, right, Safari is here and camera is here, so, so, uh, simply. By clicking, um, the toggling, um, the, the functions, uh, under Restrictions. Uh, you can block certain things, disable iTunes, disable, um, camera, iMessage, FaceTime, um, Game Center. Uh, uh, blocking any changes to passcode, right, so let's say you don't want your child to set a passcode that you do not know. Um, so you can set it such that they cannot change your passcode, so the passcode is always the same and you can come in and inspect it anytime, right? So Restrictions is, is very easy to use, just simply come in and, uh, enable some of these things, uh, as you wish. The next one let's look at is to restrict specific apps, right, to create groups of apps, uh, to be used or to install or to hide, right? So what does that mean, right, so there are three components in here. Right? So what does that mean? Right? So there are three components in here, right? So let's go one by one. Remove restricted apps. So if you tap into this, um it says that you had you can select apps to remove. So if you tap on add apps, uh it will pull from the iPad uh the current list of apps. Uh. That are installed, right? So depending on how you agree or or have an agreement with your child. You may allow your child to install, you know, some of the apps uh that they they like. And as you come in, you may see that, oh, okay, you have installed certain apps which I don't approve. Then I can come here and select uh that app and say, I do not want you to use this app. I can restrict this app, right? So for example, let's let's assume uh Poplet, right? Let's assume Poplet is a game. As I I don't want you to be using Poplet. I simply tap on this, click on click on the tick here and it will be removed. So again. Unfortunately, I need to do this ritual uh constantly. Right? I'm gonna switch over to iPad. Notice Poplet is here on the dock here. And uh on the parent's site, I'm gonna click on hide and save. And Poplet should be removed um once the command has come through. Because it is now a restricted app. See, it's just just disappeared uh down there. Right? So uh by using restricted apps uh as a parent, you may determine. Uh. What apps you want the child to be using. Uh. You can also add apps um from the store. So let's say, you know, uh Angry Bird, right? Let's say Angry Bird uh is is not something I want you uh to be using. I can add Angry Bird i- into the list of prohibited apps. So even though you have not installed it now, but subsequently you try to install it from the App Store. It will install and then it will be removed immediately because it has detected that this is a restricted app. So you can add apps that is either uh currently installed on the iPad or you can add apps that is from the App Store. Right? Click on save. Then that is the restricted apps or component, right? You can also toggle this. The toggle don't work with a mouse, but on on the phone you can tap on that to toggle. Somehow I'm not able to toggle this very well uh using my mouse. Okay, let's keep that finger is better. All right. Um. The next one is to hide restricted apps, right? Um. Certain apps uh you can hide again for for this is different from the previous in a sense that you can set. Uh. It to be hidden for a particular duration. So um. So let's say I do not want the your child to or my child to be using Book Creator. I can select this to say that I'm gonna block this for a period of one hour, right? So while we are not restricting it permanently, I'm gonna disable this for a period of one hour. Or based on a certain timing, right? So let's say uh every day between the hours of of seven P M to nine P M, it is homework time. I can put all the games down here and during this two-hour period, all the games will be hidden. Such that the child cannot access it, but after nine P M, the games will be unhidden. Uh. Because we did not delete it, we didn't restrict it, it's simply hidden. So after nine P M, then apps will appear and then your child can can use the apps again. So you can either set a duration or set a schedule uh by selecting which apps to hide, right? So that is hiding it, uh removing it is to re-restrict it or or permanently ban it, so to speak. Hide it is to hide it for a certain period of time. Right? The next one is to show um selected apps, right? This is something that that actually I I quite like. Uh. Because my boy will come to me and say, Daddy, I need to use the iPad and use it uh for for some homework. And you know how how kids are, they say they wanna use for homework and then end up they use it for other purposes, right? So if your child comes to you and say, okay, you want to use it for homework, fine, uh what apps you need, all right? So let's say I'll give you uh Book Creator, you need to do Book Creator uh uh on some currency stuff. I'll give you Book Creator and Currency. And then you may need Safari. I'll let you have Safari uh down here. Okay, so I'm gonna allow you Book Creator, Currency Safari, uh and you say you wanna do homework for an hour. So I'll give you one hour, right? So I'm gonna click on save. And then what happens uh on the iPad site is even though there's a lot of apps there, um once the command comes in. Only these three apps will be visible, right? Because you say wanna do homework, say, fine, I'll I'll let you do homework. And you you say that you ca- you only need the three apps, therefore only these three apps uh will will be visible. Uh. The rest will be hidden, right? So again, um on the other screen, I'm gonna hit the push uh command a few times. Um. There we go, right? So Book Creator is there, Safari is there, uh Currency App is there, right? So S S links and then the other uh links, these are links, these are my apps, uh and settings will always be there, uh the Muslim Manager agent will always be there. Uh. But in effect, um there's only Safari Book Creator and the Currency App uh that is visible for the child to use. During this period of one hour for their homework, okay? So no no cheating, no no trying to smoke me and and do other things, right? So uh once that hour is up or until I unblock it, uh they will only have access to those three apps, right? Then then you can toggle this off, right? For some reason, I can't undo it here, right? So I'm gonna um. Unblock it. Oh, this is interesting. I can't I can't unlock it now, right? I need to delete it, all right? I need to delete the whole thing. Oh, okay, let's delete this. Okay, so. Come back out here and then I'm gonna hit push a few times on the pending. So always try to come to pending. Uh. Just check that the common has gone out, refresh it a couple of times, hit push a couple of times. And then on iPad, uh that it will revert to normal, right? Okay, so that is the restrict uh part, right? The next one, now screen time, uh I'm gonna skip this for now because that's that's a a bit, uh this this one of the the more complex uh functions to use. Uh. I'm gonna go to the next one here, lock device in one app, all right? So this is quite easy to understand. So basically, what I'm gonna do is, uh what it does is, it will just lock the device into a particular app. So for 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 some, so so let's say, for example, um the child comes to me and says that, okay, I'm gonna use uh uh. This app for reading a book. Let's say, fine, I'm gonna let you use this to read the book, but I don't want you to do anything else. I don't want you to go to Google. I don't want you to access any or any app of your other games. So I will only allow you the N L B app, all right? So by clicking that, see, I will lock you into this app uh for again for the next thirty minutes or so, uh click on save. And get that command to go out. So now I'm gonna switch over to the other screen so you can see what happens once the command is sent out. So the iPad, there's a normal mode uh on the parent's site. I'm gonna click on save. And then uh. Push the command out a few times, it'll force it to go out more quickly. Right? And now on iPad, you will see that the app, uh the iPad would go into a what we call a single app mode. It will launch into there and it'll be app, right? And it'll be app. And they can only do this. Again, uh you you can't see it here, but pressing the home button doesn't do anything. I cannot exit from this particular app. So the the restricted one app, the single app mode uh is a good way to force, so to speak. Force your child to only use that one um app uh that that we have agreed upon. And they will not be able to get out uh to. Oh, this is this is no good. Click to disable. I can't really click to disable this. It works better on the the phone. Uh. I am stuck. I am stuck. How do I do this? Oh, I'm stuck in this mode. Okay, this is uh interesting. I was using uh the app most of the time. Uh. So the browser has this issue with clicking. I can't click to disable now. All right, so I am kind of stuck in here until uh. That hour is thirty minutes is up. Oh, that's no good. All right, okay, let's let's move along. I'll figure that out somehow. Right? So the next one down is uh web filters, right? Web filters, um as as mentioned earlier. Uh. When your child has access to the um internet, you've the browser. Then, you know, the world is their oyster. They can go to a lot of websites. Um. As a parent, you may want to use a web filter to say I will only uh allow you a certain site. So you can say I will only allow um Disney dot com. That means the entire internet is blocked. Uh. Except with the exception of Disney dot com, right? Or you can also say I I will block uh always block certain websites. So say if I don't want you to use uh Facebook dot com. Um. I can just put in Facebook dot com or Twitter dot com or or Instagram and so forth and they will be. Um. So again, I can't do the slide now. It doesn't work. It doesn't work on this, all right? Um. Not able to uh then they will not be able to to go to this uh. Um. Go to the uh the website, right? So so, okay, so I'm gonna do. Uh. I'm gonna log in on my phone, right? Uh. This is not shown on the screen. I'm gonna use my phone to log in. Uh. It is a SIM account. So now by using my phone, uh I will be able to do the sliding. To remove some of these settings, right? So give me a while while I log in. Okay, great. Okay, I can see the device now. So now um let me just uh switch back to the iPad. So that you can see uh what's what's happening. Right? Let me just uh get out from this, log into one app mode, slide to disable. Okay, get out from this, single app mode. There we go, all right? So so back out from this, go at more. Um. So earlier on, we uh were trying the. We were trying the um the blocking of website. So let's see how that works. Uh. Let me just apply the filter to always block. So if I go into um Safari, uh and I go to, let's see, Facebook. Dot com, because we've put in a web filter as a parent. Uh. You will see a message like this, right? Facebook dot com is restricted uh because uh we have now blocked. We have now blocked um on the parent's site. We have blocked Facebook dot com as one of the sites. You can certainly add more, um that but the more sites you add, then it may slow down the system because it's checking against all these websites. Uh. So ideally, you rely on uh uh Apple's built-in uh uh content filter to block out some of the undesirable websites. Uh. But for for some other specific websites that you do not approve of, uh you can always add it in here as well, okay? So that's the web filter part. Um. The next one uh down here after that is to check and install uh and delete apps. So um when you click into this, what you will see, if you refresh this, you will see all the apps that's installed. Again, depending, like I said, depending on 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 how the the Charles iPad is being managed. Um. They may have the autonomy to install anything they want. And as a parent, you may come into this site to see what they have installed. And if you disapprove or certain apps, then you can simply just come in here and click the trash can and it'll just delete itself, right? So you can click on the refresh to pull the latest list of apps that uh they have. So um let's say I want to delete uh Book Creator, right? Let's say Book Creator is a different game. I wanna delete that. So switching over to the iPad. So Book Creator is this app, you know, the last icon on the second row. So on the parent's site, I'm gonna click on the trash can, delete. And without physical access to the iPad, um the app will be deleted. Uh. Because as a parent, I have just removed it. I've just sent a command to remove this particular app, right? Let me just push this out. There we go. So Book Creator is gone, right? So I have just deleted that remotely. Uh. Using the remove app. Um. So so again, when you have, uh when you give your child. Um, an iPad and perhaps you give them autonomy to self-manage, uh it is good to come in once in a while to see what they have. And if it's something that you do not approve of or you feel that they shouldn't be using uh at that age. Uh. You can quickly just uh delete from here, right? You can also use this to install apps. I've never used it because I find it a bit clunky. You'll still be required to key in the Apple I D and password on the on the device. So it's not super useful, anything you wanna install, uh you probably want to work with your child uh to install that, okay? Um. So that's the manage apps part. And then uh below that, the last one here is to remove password. So as a personal device, uh it's it's recommended the child put a pass pass code on the device because as they bring it to school. Um. You wouldn't want anyone to pick up the the iPad and then uh have access to the information at homework uh that they have in there. So most of the time you would have the child putting a passcode, uh but a child may also change the passcode and if you want to inspect it. Um. They may, then you may not be able to get in, right? Because they've changed your passcode. So no need to wrestle with your child. To ask them for a passcode or if the child has put in a passcode and they forgot the passcode, then what happens, right? The iPad is locked. So let's say there's a passcode and again I'll put my super secure one all ones here, right? So I'm gonna set a passcode here and so that now the iPad has a passcode, right? Now iPad has a passcode, uh it is prompting me for a passcode. So without a passcode, I can go in. Now, on the on the parent's site, all you need to do is using this, click on remove passcode. So let's say they have forgotten it or they refuse to give you that pass password. You come here and click on confirm, just one click. And it will send a command to remove the passcode on the iPad site. So I'm gonna click on confirm, let the command go out. Those which you rule again, right? So allow the command to propagate. And now without keying the passcode, I just press home button, then I've just come in and the passcode is clear, right? The passcode is no longer. You will have to set the passcode again, right? That's password has been cleared. So the the clear passcode is a very useful uh feature um for for parent to see, okay? Because, you know, the child may forget a password or they may change the passcode to something that's uh that you don't know. And the the they don't allow you access to it for whatever reason, uh you can use this quickly to to remove the passcode. Uh. Alternatively, just now under restrictions, right? Just now we talk about restrictions, uh both of you. Can agree on a passcode, right? Be it the passcode one, two, three, four, five, six. Uh. You can set it such that they cannot change the passcode. Right? So the child cannot change the passcode without your approval. Uh. He'll always be one, two, three, four, five, six. So you can always, you can always go in, okay? So um that's that's uh the 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 last one here, uh the the last one and the and and analytics uh doesn't really do anything. It it just shows you some of the trends um and the common apps that uh is used globally. Uh. But if you don't put in the above date and all that, uh it's not so very accurate and I don't, I've I've never found this to be very, very useful. So if if you go into there, see what yes, shown is for my boy, uh that is born in twenty thirteen. Uh. The most popular YouTube, Netflix, Minecraft, uh which which kind of makes sense. Yeah, this is is kind of accurate for a uh for. A nine-year-old boy, yeah? Um. So so most installed and most removed, okay, this can be useful, right? So as a parent, as I say, you don't know which are the apps that most parents around the world um will remove for their child, right? Most parents remove Snapchat, YouTube, Instagram, Roblox, Netflix, TikTok, right? So if you don't know what to block, then this could be a good indication. Say, oh, I actually don't know what other people block. Then just look into here and say, okay, I'm just block all this twenty because other parents have blocked it, right? So these are the trends and there's some other uh device uh information here uh which you can look at over time, right? Okay, so uh in, okay, we we've got about ten minutes, okay? Uh. Let's come back to screen time, right? So screen time is interesting. Um. And and it's it's interesting because it's it's a good concept. Uh. But I I personally, I found it is a bit clunky and sometimes it doesn't work very well, right? Um. The idea of a screen time is to allow your child to have a pool of time daily that they can use. So let's say I want to set and allow my child uh two hours pool time use a day, right? I'll just click on two hours to say I'll give you two hours daily, uh click on save. And it will be pushed out to the device. Now, what happens is here, this is normal mode, right? Once the command comes in, it will hide all the apps and disable iPad, so to speak. Such that none of the apps will appear, so it's effectively useless. And um the child will need to activate certain things to get it to to work, right? To get it to work. Um. Let's see the command coming. Is it coming in? Okay, pending to apply. Gonna push this a bit. There we go, all right? So once the command has come in, right? So effectively, it will remove all apps. There we go, alright, so once the command has come in, right, so effectively it will remove all apps. And introduce another app called Screen Guide, which is the screen guide that we have on our phones. But it's not serving the same purpose, it's it's not installed normally, but when you go into screen time mode, uh all the apps will disappear. Except the web web links for S L S and whatnot, um uh or then you only have this screen guide. And the child will need to launch Screen Guide. And they'll be presented with a screen that says that your parent have given you two hours of time to use, right? So when a child wants to start using the iPad, they'll tap on unlock to stop the timer. I can say I'm gonna use it for fifteen minutes, uh or thirty minutes and so forth, or use up all available time, and click on unlock. And the iPad will then be unlocked, the apps will appear subsequently. That will appear subsequently, and they can use the iPad as per normal, uh all 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 while the timer is counting down, right? And when the child needs to stop, they can press pause to stop the timer, go do homework, go shower, eat dinner, come back and start the timer again. But all in all, they will only get two hours of time use for that particular day, right? So so it's it's like a a a time pool, they can tap on it anytime they want, use it for as long as they they need to. Pause it, once they pause it, once they pause the timer, so let me just pause it now, so once they pause the timer, the timer will stop. And uh after a while, uh all the apps will be hidden, and they will not be able to use the iPad effectively. Uh while this this timer is on pause, uh then they go and do, you know, other things, do the homework, go to shower and so forth. Uh and come back later to to start the timer again, so it's 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 a nice concept. Uh but I I do find that it's a bit clunky, and sometimes it doesn't doesn't uh respond as as quickly as as I would like it to be. Uh but feel free to try it out and see if it works well for you, uh it is a a nice concept. Uh to to allow more autonomy to your child to use the iPad throughout the day. Um then under the parent's site, right, so let's come back to here, so under the parent's site, uh when you go into screen screen time. Normally you set it, normally you set it uh as a a um. For that period, right, you set it for that period for the entire um, uh for the entire, it's it's always two hours. Um that day, right, so every day is the same, and if they run out of time, they can come and communicate with you and say Daddy, can I have more time? You can use this to say, okay, I will give you a bit more bonus time, okay, you need another fifteen minutes, thirty minutes to complete your schoolwork. Then I can add you another bonus time for this particular day, then you'll be increased, right, so if it's zero, they'll be increased by thirty minutes. Um uh for for that period, uh just by by have the ability to to do this, right? Uh then the other thing, uh which which. Is uh over here, so if I go into edit here, uh you can go into advanced mode. Advanced mode allows you to have different timings um per day, right, per weekday, right? The normal basic mode is two hours every day, if you go into advanced, then you can do additional. So for example, during school days, okay, only two hours uh a day. Uh but on weekends, okay, I'm feeling generous, it's it's the weekend anyway, I'll give you five hours usage time uh on Saturdays and Sundays. So you can set different now time pools for different days of the week. Uh you can also say, okay, during this screen time, I I'm not gonna allow you to use all the apps, I only allow you to use. Uh a subset of the apps, that you can also designate that under uh advanced. Um under this edit apps and click on save, then you use it in the advanced mode rather than the basic mode, right? So that's the idea of of screen time, uh the ability to set a time pool for your child. Such that they can use it as and when, and be able to tap on that uh as needs be. Um so that that gives them a bit more more freedom and to build some, you know, trust and responsibility uh on their side. Okay, so that is the last function uh we have, so once you disable that, then everything comes back. Uh I wanna come come back to, I'm coming, come back to the screen, uh so that's the last one we have here on screen time. I think we are right on about the hour, uh so we have timeout restrictions, we can restrict specific apps, we've done screen time. A single app mode, web filters, deleting apps, remove passcodes, right, so that's everything you have, um. If you have any issues, you find that I'm not able to communicate and link to the device and so forth. Uh one of the ways to fix it is to delete the device and link it again, right? So you can see this trash can at a uh top right corner here, I can say, okay, I will delete this, remove the link. So now Zachary no longer has an iPad, I've just destroyed the link, no link, and you add the device again, go through the entire thing. And then at the same same thing as what we've done initially, uh you have to launch uh the the webpage. Right, be prompted to go to manager app and so forth, and key in the school code, right, key in the school code. And do the link from from scratch, and once it's linked back, then you will be able to try to see whether the communication. Uh has been reestablished uh with the iPad. Okay, so that so that's that's one tip, if you encounter any communication problems, I would find that you're not able to send uh further commands to the device. Uh you can uh do a relinking, right? The other one um that uh I want to just share quickly, so if there is more than one guardian, let's say Daddy and Mummy also wants to. Uh control or grandparent uh also wants to control, you can add additional. You can add additional guardians uh using Screen Guide, so come back to the parent's site, right? So come back to the parent's site, so now I've done the link, right, so the device is back, right? So if you want additional um parent, you go under members here, and over at the bottom, you can add another guardian, right? So click and another guardian, uh there's some instructions, some steps for you to follow, to link another parent to add into this family, right? So you have this code, then you use this code, use for the other parent, and you're joined to the same family. Um if you want to add another child, let's say you've got twins, you know, in the particular level, both under the school, then you can add another child. Um and have this other child be also be managed uh under the same family. Uh obviously, you then need to link to uh that child as well, using the same process. Then you can manage two of your child, both separate devices and manage them separately, uh with additional guardians and parents or grandparents. Uh if you want to, right, so that's where you add additional family members, okay? Uh clicking on the gearbox here allows you to change password and and things like that. Uh if you have forgotten your Screen Guide password, right? No worries, when you add this screen, when you logged out here, uh at this screen, click on forgot password, right? Type in that email that you have used. To create and recover, and they will send a link to your email to reset that quite easily, right? So 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 long as you don't forget that email you use, uh you will always be able to get that password back uh quite easily. Okay, that's uh that's all we have uh for this hour, I'm happy to take any questions. If there are, uh you can either ask, I think there's a Q and A function that that we're using. Uh or you can also ask verbally, I I guess.
Um David Masni here.
Yes.
Uh there are parents who are asking questions in the Q and A section.
Yep.
Uh could you answer live for the two questions? Uh the first question is, if parents have accidentally used M D M to restrict the child's use. For the whole day and forget to remove the restriction, will the child still be able to use the iPad in school? Since the control is in the school during school hours.
Yes, that's a very good question, yes, so that's the purpose of of the school hours. So so if you have set a a a control to say that I will block you until eight A M or nine A M. Uh at seven A M, those controls will be released because you theoretically don't have the rights to manage the device, right? So so um the the your child will not be blocked uh from using the device. Uh if you have gone past the seven A M, uh but try not to do that, right? Because we 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 you know the school hours is going to be from seven A M to four P M, uh try not to put it to like eight A M, nine A M. Uh because it may interfere with other things, uh technically, uh it will be released. Uh but let's not uh stress the system uh in in this week, right? So so it's a good question, uh if you do accidentally set a restriction that goes into the school hours, the window. Uh it will be removed, uh but let's try not to do that. Okay.
Uh David, there is another question, if the parents set two hours, will the school hours still be counted?
Uh uh no, no, so does the the screen time, if you set a pool of two hours, uh it will be outside of school hours, right? Because during school hours, uh you cannot set a screen time because you have no capability or even no rights to set set screen time during school hours. So you're always being used between the hours of seven A M to four P M for school use. Only after four P M, then you can put in the Screen Guide restrictions, and that includes the screen time settings. So we set two hours, uh they will use those two hours after four P M until midnight, and from midnight until the following morning, seven A M. Although that will be a different day already, sorry, that will be a different day, so that the pool, the two hours pool technically would be from four P M to midnight. Or uh uh midnight, that's the two hours, and then the next day will be a new two hours from midnight to seven A M, alright? So but but the the your 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 child is unlikely to to wake up at midnight or one A M to try to use that pool. Um so it's 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 realistically, it will be around four P M onwards. Uh until, you know, sleep time, which will be about nine P M, ten P M, uh before you force them to go to bed. Alright, when will the M D M license expire uh? Um so so that 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 the 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 school will will have a program, so as you progress through through years, P four, P five and beyond. Uh I I suppose if you're under the iPad program, the school will continue to use the M D M to help manage uh the the device during school time. And to allow the parents to to co-manage after school time, right? So so typically it is a twelve-month cycle, uh but presumably it will be renewed every year um as as they progress, okay? So so thanks Fred for for that question, uh if my second child goes to P three and another child is in P five. I need to purchase another iPad for the second child. Uh uh ye- yes, I presume so, yes, because that's now in our example, so I've got Zachary and I've got Emily, and they're in different levels. And if both of them are in a iPad program, then they will each need to have a individual iPad for use. Uh if you want them to to share, it it is still possible, then you just need to uh manage them them properly. Uh or I I it or if they need to use the device in school and in class, then then realistically, you will need to have two uh devices. Okay, uh but 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 the the school will will help you with that, if if there's there's uh uh any issues getting a second device. Um okay, so that's uh that's the iPad, uh any other questions?
Um there is um Edwin Chia, he raised his hand, if you would like to ask a question. Can you please type in the Q and A? Thank you.
I see some questions under the chat as well, so I'm just scanning through, that's a school block Apple I D sign in, um. I I I don't know whether the school blocks it during school hours, uh the M D M does have this function. To block Apple I D sign in, so in 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 the circumstance that that the school do not want the students to sign in and install apps during school hours. Uh they may block it, right, so the M D M does have that uh function to block that, uh I I can't tell offhand whether it's been implemented. Uh or not, right, I'm not even saying in.
Um are there any more questions before we close the session?
Right, uh this session is recorded, so so the school will put it online uh at some point, and uh so you can always review this video. And and just just check out, you know, I may have gone uh a bit fast uh during the session. So feel free to come and look at this video again to to learn how to use uh some of these functions, right? Uh iPad program, uh I think uh Madame Masni, this is something um that that you can answer, the iPad program.
Okay, Madam Faisal will answer this question.
Okay, all right, you hear me, all right, uh this program is highly encouraged, it's for P three and P four. But also we also want uh learning energy to uh go beyond just P at P four level, alright? Uh not every primary school, just a primary school student, but our school, we have started this for the past few years, alright? And uh whether you need to purchase it from school, no, uh we have actually recommended a vendor, however, if you want to buy it uh outside. Uh any shops is okay, yeah, just that if you want to know uh about the requirement, the specification or that. You already uh should, we do the link uh in our Q and A function, you may want to take a look at it, yeah, okay? Yeah, so is there uh any more questions? If no, alright, um then you will end the session, alright? Okay, thank you parents for joining us today, alright, this uh recording will be uploaded in our school YouTube channel. Uh by next week, if you have any further questions, do not worry, okay? Uh please do get back to us, you can email me, and increase the chat, or Madame Masni, okay? Uh and also if you want to ask to give you a call, just uh call the general office number and we'll get back to you, okay? Alright, that will be all for today, thank you for joining us again, parents, thank you so much.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you, today every time, yeah.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye, thank you.